Good morning. We're going to call to order the Franklin County, County Commissioner meeting for Wednesday, September 29th.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer, Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation led by David Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we give you thanks for this day. Blessings that... Guidance and clarity. Counting...
Do we have any correspondence in organizational business?
No, ma'am.
All right. Any public comments?
Nope.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda today consists of minutes from the September 22nd meeting, September payroll in the amount of $1,202,489.75. Tax change orders with zero value change, solicit bids for culverts, and solicit bids for tires. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes. All right, so the only order of business that we have today is to consider approving the solicitation of bids to finance two 2021 Caterpillar motor graders. Mr. David Lee?
Commissioners, if you recall earlier this year, we we made the agreement to purchase two new motor graders. We have an agreement with Caterpillar that are fully equipment that on a certain basis, we trade in our existing blades for new ones. They have a very robust trade-in value for us that really makes it worthwhile to do so. And so we entered into that agreement to purchase those several months ago. I think the spring, actually. And those blades are finally going to be delivered here in the next few weeks. And so it's time to establish financing for these two blades. Historically, we have gone through financing. We will pay these out over a four-year period. And that has worked out pretty well for us. The interest rates that we have seen, at least in my time since 2019, has ranged anywhere from 1.35% all the way up to a whopping 2.52%, which are very good rates. And so we average right at just under $10,000 in finance fees for these motor graders over the course of the loan. I would expect to, you know, I'm hoping for similar interest rates so that we can continue this program. I've got a lot more information. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I think these interest rates are incredibly low. And yeah, it's a great way to utilize our money and make sure we have good cash flow.
It stretches it, for sure.
Anybody have any questions for David about the financing? If not, an affirmative motion in support of this item would be, I make a motion authorizing the solicitation of bids to finance two 2021 140 all-wheel-drive Caterpillar motor graders.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And that moves us on to staff reports.
Yeah, just real quick. We've been talking on and off for months about the countywide software project. The deadline to solicit bids on that is tomorrow. I will tell you, we're not blown away with what we've seen so far. So we're hoping that, you know, that changes between now and then. But certainly, once we have proposals, we'll sit down, kind of the group that's been working through these will sit down, go over them, and then we'll have an update to give the five of you. But the next step would be, you know, provided there's interest on the team's end, would be to start looking at scheduling demos and taking a more comprehensive look. And that would certainly be an item that we would likely discuss at a study session with all of you, just so you fully understood, you know, improved functionality that we would in theory be getting. And so we'll see how that goes tomorrow. I am correct, Dustin, it is tomorrow, right? Noon tomorrow, okay. And so, yeah, we'll, within the next couple of weeks, have another update for you on that, so.
What kind of response? How many did you get? Multiple? Or are you not blown away because of the price, or?
No, we just haven't gotten that comprehensive response that we were hoping for. Like, I don't think price, I mean, obviously, price is a factor, and that is something we will be concerned with. But at this phase, we're really not. We're really just, we were hoping to get, you know, several responses that could meet our needs, and that just hasn't been the case as of right now.
I know at the Southeast Kansas meeting on Thursday, I actually sat at lunch across from the lady, one lady that represents one of those companies. And I know she had, but she, yeah, she does a lot in the state, but anyway.
Well, and I think what we're running into, and it affects us in a lot of ways, is we're really an interesting size here in Franklin County. Like, we're not a huge government, and we're not Johnson County, we're not Douglas. And so in some respects, we're less attractive to some of these bigger companies because it's not as, you know, our menu of services isn't as robust as some of those governments. But on the other hand, we're not small either. Like, we're big enough that we need improved software, we need this functionality. And we're just kind of caught, in my opinion, in kind of an in-between spot where we, I don't think people would look at us and say, they're a small government. But certainly, we're not, you know, as big as others, and that makes these types of proposals tricky for us. But that's all I have this morning.
Casey, do you have a...
I'm a little reluctant to say this because when I do, things change. But we have seen a slight decrease in numbers this week and a slight decrease in testing for COVID. Pfizer did get approval of their booster dose through the FDA. But about 95%, I would say, of vaccines that we gave in Franklin County were Moderna. And so if you got Moderna, you're supposed to wait for a Moderna booster, not a Pfizer booster. We will be giving, though, first, second, and booster doses of Pfizer on October 20th at Advent Health Ottawa. So if anybody's looking to get their Pfizer booster because they got it outside of Franklin County, we will have those boosters available. And then also Pfizer has just announced that they've submitted their paperwork, or whatever it is they have to submit to the FDA for authorization for five- to 11-year-olds to get a vaccine dose, so. That's really all I have unless anybody has any questions. Okay.
Sari, Maple, our HR Director.
Thanks. Just a few things I wanted to let you know about. The first thing is we've been very busy, both Cassie Harmon and Amy Hodo from the HR team, and also Erin, Lori, Brenda Fitzmeier, Casey Brady, and myself on the Wellness Committee. And we've been planning our first and hopefully annual Employee Health and Wellness Fair. And it's scheduled for tomorrow, tomorrow morning from 7:00 to 11:00. We'll actually be at Celebration Hall. We'll be doing the biometric screenings there. And then we'll also have about 12 other vendors that will be providing health and wellness information to employees. We'll have healthy snacks and some fun prizes, just worthwhile information for employees. Just to let you know, the entire event is funded through a wellness grant that Erin, Lori, and the Wellness Team received in 2019. But we just haven't been able to spend the funds because of COVID in 2020. So we're really looking forward to that tomorrow. And we'll also have flu shots available for employees. And then the second thing that I wanted to just kind of briefly touch on is the challenges in recruitment and hiring. And I know Derek has talked about this, and Paul Bean has also talked about that. It's not a surprise that we're experiencing challenges along with about every other employer in the area. But just wanted to let you know, we currently have 17 full-time positions that are open right now with the county. And then we also have three part-time or seasonal positions as well. So that's about 8.3% of our overall workforce. And that's not even counting additional positions that we haven't posted yet. So we definitely have some opportunities for employees to join us. We've had to really, you know, think outside the box and try some new recruiting, I guess, attempts or different efforts. But again, other employers are trying to do the same thing that we are. And we're all competing for, you know, the same qualified employees. So if you aren't already doing this, I would encourage you to share the job opportunities that Casey posts on Facebook each week. You can share it to your personal page, share it to any groups that you're a member of. If you want a hard copy of the positions, I would be more than happy to give those to you. And you can maybe post them at your church, any organizations that you're a member of. And just let me know if you're interested in that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is really just a FYI, or to start the conversation. We received an email from Harvey Felsky, which is our underwriting manager at K-Camp. And he was just letting us know that in 2018, we discussed, the commissioners discussed, insuring the courthouse at historical reproduction value rather than a replacement value. So at that time, the commissioners decided to defer changing the valuation method. But just wanted to bring that up again. Earlier in the year, we had the courthouse appraised, and again, they provided the historical reproduction value. And if we were to change our valuation to a historical reproduction rather than the replacement value, it will increase our contribution for 2022 by about $13,500. So if you want to discuss further, we can, you know, add that to next week's agenda. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I think it's probably obvious, but effectively what she's saying is, with our current, the way we're currently insured, if the courthouse burned down, we would basically get a replacement. But it would not be, in all likelihood, would look nothing like our current courthouse. It would be, you know, a building, like we're just, we're paying for just replacement, another courthouse. Whereas if we were to go to this, what I would call higher level of insurance, they would attempt to recreate what the courthouse actually is like. And so, you know, rebuild it to its historical nature. And that is where, why the premium would go up so much. Because obviously, it'd be a lot more expensive to rebuild the courthouse as it sits today than to build a square building like all the other square buildings that are being built, if that makes sense. And you don't have to make this decision today. I don't know what the deadline is. We could probably squeeze it into the budget. But in 2018, we elected not to do it, so. Rod, do you have some thoughts?
As much as I love the old building, if you rebuild it like it is, it's still not...
What it was.
Not what it was. You're just, you know, as much as you'd hate to see it happen, you'd want to just go modern, I think. Because it would be, basically be fake. You know, it really wouldn't be historic anymore, you know? You're trying to cover it, make it look like it's historic, but it's not. So much as everybody would hate it, I see no, basically puts a big savings to the community. Just because I don't think it could happen.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's the exact logic that was used in 2018, was very similar, yeah. Any other thoughts on that? Would, do you agree?
I thought the same way, it'd be a replica, so.
Yeah.
Be historical.
Ian, Rod, do you have any thoughts?
You would have a new old building that still had all the problems with being an old building instead of, yeah. Yeah, I think I agree. I don't know. It's been there a long time. You're thinking, okay. Been over there, you know, 150 years, let's, uh...
Any, anything to, any other thoughts, Rod?
I don't have any right now.
Okay. I mean, what I am hearing is, you know, probably keep it where we're at and not. But if, you know, you all have thoughts and feel differently, certainly reach out.
And that's only if it was totally destroyed. If there was a small fire, they would restore it, I mean, inside. And it would take a lot to take all that stone out. But, yeah, but if you're looking at a tornado or something, and then you're starting from scratch, then I think, yeah, that we're kind of...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Pass it through Colt, just to make sure he's on the same page, but yeah.
Sure.
I had one thought about employment. A lot of these minimum skilled jobs are offering sign-on bonuses and stuff like that as an incentive. Have we looked at that possibility, maybe?
Yeah, we've, we've talked about, I mean, we've brainstormed, we've talked about a lot of different possibilities. And we have talked about that, and it's just all, I mean, it's, it's just all, I mean, it comes down to a budget issue, a tax dollar issue. And, you know, and this is an expression that Sari often uses, but an internal equity issue. Like, I mean, we've never, none of our current employees have received a hiring or a sign-on bonus. And so do we potentially create morale issues by now everybody we bring on, we pay sign-on bonuses to? Would it even have an effect? I mean, we, we talk about this all the time. And, and, you know, certainly, we're aware that, I'm just, I'm getting right back into the discussion we had last week, that there will come a point in time where we are going to have to give an increase across the board. And I would expect that it would be probably significant. But we're just waiting to see, you know, for example, what's the federal government going to do with minimum wage? Because if we give a raise now, let's say we give $3 across the board, and then the government raises minimum wage $4 or $5, which is not inconceivable, then all of a sudden, we've got positions making at or less than minimum wage. We've got to do it all over again. And then we've went through the process twice, and it's just inefficient. So we are trying to plug the dam department by department, so to speak, while we gather more data, and hopefully, the market will settle down. And, but yeah, we, we've certainly discussed that as a possibility, Roy.
Yeah, I've heard a few employees grumble a little bit about just the money part. How much do you pay per hour? They don't think about the benefits and that sort of thing. And they say, oh, so-and-so is paying X number of dollars per hour. Why isn't the county doing better? And it's, it's kind of hard to promote the total package that the county offers versus just upfront pay with no benefits, so.
Yeah.
It's a challenge. I see that.
It is. Yep. Yep. Yeah, thank you, Roy.
Paul Bean, do you have something to share with us today? Very good. Good, because we don't want any more bad, yeah, bad vibes today. David Lee?
Okay, so, since last week, our crews have repaired or installed six entrances or crossroad tubes. And just as a little bit more information, we've installed or repaired, well, installed, over 120 entrances or crossroad tubes through August. And we've got, you know, we've got a bunch more on the books to get taken care of before the end of the year. So that's, that's the reason for the additional order. We've also added pug material on several of the hills in District 405, which is south of Pomona. There's a lot of terrain issues with rock ledges and that sort of thing. And putting this material over it allows for a better traveling surface. So we're trying to do that. We finished the ditching and road improvement project on Utah Terrace, south of Reno. And then we also spent a couple of days patching, in addition to hauling rock to multiple districts and that sort of thing. We also assisted with some traffic control for the striping crew that finished up last week. There were a couple of spots with heavy traffic, and our folks went out there to kind of help make that a little safer situation for, for everybody involved. I have a field check site visit with KDOT on the Osmond Terrace Bridge Replacement Program. We're going to be doing that Friday morning. And I've got a walkthrough with Bartland West on our shop site. That'll be, when is that? That's next Monday. Yeah, that's next Monday afternoon. And then I, this afternoon, I've got what I hope is the, is the last scoping meeting with Bartland West on the Old 50 Project. So if we can come to terms on that, which I'm pretty confident that we've kind of honed in on, on an appropriate scope and fee for that, my hope is that we'll be able to bring that to you next week for your consideration, so that we can get started with that project. Also, the concrete on the Virginia Road Project just north of the lane, that concrete is in. It looks great. I haven't actually been out there, but I've received a couple of different sets of pictures. I think it's going to work great. The last thing that they've got to do at the toe of that concrete slope, they've got to put a kind of a toe wall that's going to be built out of large diameter riprap. And that's, that's the last phase. So I expect them to be out of there and that project to be cleaned up and finished here within the next week or so. So they're getting right down to the end on that. That'll be a huge improvement to that area and really go a long ways into saving that road in future flood events. And that's, that's all I've got for today. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I went down there and it looked good.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the people down there ought to be, hopefully...
I hope so.
That's been a real issue for years. I think that you putting it together and them doing it, it looked good.
Yeah, I think it will serve its purpose and really protect the road and ultimately, you know, the travelway for...
Yeah, the way with the root, the weed problem, naturally. You know, and concrete's thick, too. It ain't...
No, it's substantial.
It's thick.
Hopefully, we'll have some rain someday to check it out.
Well, I think I just read this morning, we're in possible flash flood territory this, the next few days. The way that the moisture flowing up from the Gulf of Mexico and the patterns of, the wind patterns and stuff are going to hold that right over the, right over us. And it's just going to be one long train of storms. So hopefully, it shifts a little further to the east, but we'll be, try to be prepared for it.
Well, the allergy sufferer in my house will appreciate some moisture. All right, Janet Pettuck?
I don't know anything.
All right, we'll start with Commissioner comments. Don?
Yeah, one thing I might mention today, where Paul was put together for us, the Economic Development Get Together. We got people from the six counties in the Lake Region area. We're going to meet out there today, and Paul did a great job putting it together. He met with our board here a couple, two, three months ago. And they decided that, I convinced them that this is something, we had the right person to move forward with it now. And we put some money towards it to help it get it off the ground, hopefully. And with your and Paul's deal with Project 17, the timing is perfect. I know I talked to him over the last few months. They, they said they were talking about something, but they really wouldn't say what it was. And now they've come out, and it sounds like they're going to use our area of Project 17 as the, as the first example for statewide economic drive and use our area. And if we can put our six counties together here, I mean, we're not limited to us, but at least it shows to them that we're progressive about it, and we're already thinking about it. And like I said, a couple of years ago, we did a project with Project 17, and they were really good about it. They did the grant writing, they facilitated it, they did the whole work for, for the whole 17 counties. So I think this is going to be a, hopefully going to be a good deal for us. Only I think I mentioned, tomorrow I'll be going to, we're doing a massive ribbon cutting for the Wellsville area, doing 12 businesses.
Well, that's tomorrow. I thought that was last week.
Yeah, it's tomorrow. And I just mentioned last week, I forgot. But anyhow, they've done a real good job, so they'll finish up. But Bucky Distilleries are going to put on a little, get a little longer get-together. It's going to be a four-hour-long deal, pushing from one business to the other. But I think it's a good deal with COVID now, maybe eased up a little bit, that they feel comfortable moving forward with it. And I think it'll be a good deal. That's all.
Commissioner Dunn?
Well, I might mention, Midland Railroad's pushing cars back out on the main line. And they blocked Sand Creek Road and Old 59 Highway again yesterday. I got a call from the Sheriff's Office just warning me that I might get some calls. And I got a few calls about blocking the road. They've got a whole ton of container cars up all the way to Baldwell. I guess they got to get out on the main line. And it's at the discretion of Burlington Northern Santa Fe when they can bring them out on the main line to move them somewhere else. So it's, it's kind of an irritation for people out there in the north part of the county coming into Ottawa or leaving Ottawa and find rail cars sitting there for 30 or 40 minutes. So it's very inconvenient and very frustrating for some people. Last, I guess it was a week ago, I went to that legislative, Farm Bureau Legislative Tour out at Bickelmeyer's, Joe Bickelmeyer and Family Farm out there, Selkville Ranch. And beautiful place, over 4,000 acres of just pure pasture land. And just across, right on the Osage County line. And you see the windmills over there in Coffee, Coffee County, I meant Coffee County line. See the windmills there and the open range land. And I choose the open range land for visual beauty rather than to see windmills off in the distance, you know, turning. So had a good legislative lunch, lunch, dinner out there at Bickelmeyer's Ranch. And, and all the representatives from Senator Marshall and the rest, representatives of those folks were there. And Carolyn Dyson was there, she's running for County Treasurer this go-around. And Blaine Finch was there. So it was a nice evening out there at the ranch. That's all I got. That's all I got.
All right, yeah, there's three of us out there at the, at the dinner. It was, it was a beautiful setting. Also, last Thursday, I went to the Southeast Kansas County Officials Association in Ellen County. In the morning, we had our commissioners' meeting, and we had a pretty good discussion about the future of the KACC, where we want to go with that. We had a legislative update with Jay Hall, and then we also had a pretty robust discussion about the new law that our Senator Karen Tyson has provided to us, and she was actually there, so she got to hear all of our comments and complaints, and, and hopefully she takes those into consideration. She did say that there probably would be a tweaking of that bill this year, and so looks forward to see if she can do some things that will help, help us out. A lot of the smaller counties were like, you know, we are, if we raise our taxes, everybody knows, so, you know, and, and the other complaint was, we have a very good county clerk who, who was really good about providing the information on that bill to all of our cemetery districts and the towns and the townships, but some of these counties, when people were having their budget meetings, they absolutely had no idea what to do with that new legislation, and they were all kind of swimming in upstream and not knowing whether, some of them didn't even pass their budget because they were worried, they didn't know what they were doing. So anyway, it's definitely still a work in progress. Monday, the city had their study session. Charlotte Newkirk, who is who I work with for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, retired after 28 years with the city, and so they had a little celebration for her. They had a presentation from Paul Mulberg from the Kansas Municipal Energy Association, who kind of gave a presentation about what happened in that February cold spell. And then they did, I think probably what they're going to do, and now they have an additional $1 million that they have to figure out how to pay, that they had already put a surcharge on the electric bills for their customers, that they're just going to make that surcharge go a little bit further into probably first quarter or second quarter of 2023 to cover that additional $1 million. They also approved some neighborhood revitalization properties, which we probably will be doing in the next week or so, and also started some condemnation of some other additional properties. And the only other thing is that if you come into the annex, there are a lot of guys playing with mud here, but the walls are starting to look wonderful. It's very much an ongoing process, though, so excuse our dust, I guess. And if nobody else has anything, I would...
Hi, Mayor Turner. I had to wait our meeting last week here in the car club, brought the deal. Ed come up, and he thought I was going to say more. Well, I didn't say more, but I will today. It went really well. I know Sarah Kayler the other day mentioned during the city meeting, inviting people to come forward, that we can always, that working, both those organizations, tractor clubs can use all the help, all the volunteers. You don't have to be a member if you don't want to, but there's that one or two days a week that you'd want to donate some time and dedicate to helping. I know the county's been great, and the city's been great, but we, they still need the individual people. We do have a lot of people come forward every year, but, but you can always use more, like, make one person work all day. Maybe you can give a few hours here, here and there. Just to give you, for instance, the food vendors, the first day, a lot of them ran out of food, had to run to our local stores here and get refurbished for the next day. So that's, that's a good deal. I mean, you know, and I think all the reports, dollar-wise, all of our downtown businesses and restaurants and everybody else just had a heck of a big weekend. So if they have a big weekend, sales taxes are good, bet tax and tourism tax is good. So, you know, and I commented Casey before, she helped a whole lot with doing posters and just different, different things to help with the car show and help us facilitate it. She's got her, her own job and, and a lot to do, but she did take the time to do that, you know? And so we, I know the numbers are down a little, but really, it ran a lot better because the numbers were down a little. I mean, you know, 1,600 is a lot easier to control than 2,100. 400 cars more just makes a real traffic issue. We have enough traffic issues as it goes down there. But like I said, emergency management did a great job down there, and the auto police department had their command center down there. They were right there for any first aid issues, or I know I had a couple of deals, I personally picked up a lady, a little girl had a bee sting. Well, where do you go on a Saturday except for the emergency room, you know? And they took them right down there, and they took care of them right down there at our ambulance guys and emergency management and police departments. Just give a kudos to all the people that did help with that project. That's all.
And membership to the, to be a, over the road gang is what, $20 a year? How much is it? I think that's what he said yesterday.
What now?
How much is it to be a part of the, to actually be a member of the over the road gang?
Oh, $25.
$25.
And, you know, they don't mention, you actually get that back because at showtime, the members get two free shirts. That's more than pays for your, your membership for you. It's kind of probably the same way with the tractor, tractor club and everything else, you know, if you're a member. And then you have the ability to buy shirts for your family at that price. We don't mention, we, we do give a big cut price to, to all the businesses in town that want to buy them for their employees to wear the day or the weekend at car show. We also, to give, for instance, Smoke Creations bought 50 shirts, so to give away between men and how many people they probably have working and everything, so. There, so would they do, there's a lot more of that you don't, you don't see that goes on.
That just reminded me, so at the study session, this, this was their September, all of their department reports were there. I mean, their study session was 200 pages, so guys be glad to, but anyway, the one thing that they keep every, it's like every month after month after month when they do those reports, they always bring up that our county sales tax for this month was way more than last year, and last year was way more than any other. So we are continuing to have huge amounts of sales tax. People are still, so, I mean, maybe that's a good thing about the pandemic is that people are staying home and, and shopping local, but, but that is, that is one good thing for it. All right, so we are ready for a motion to adjourn.
I'm going.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Paul, you want to start a slow clap?